We can get up. Pledge of the
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Lois Tiley?
Present.
Diane Dennis?
Here.
Christine Newman?
Here.
Richard Horner?
Here.
Michael Nesbit?
Present.
Kathy Harris?
Here.
And Sarah Tiley?
Present.
Yeah, have there any changes to the agenda?
I would like to change the word Tuesday to Wednesday, January twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I would like to change it to Wednesday, January twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Oh. Hmm, might be a good idea.
It's breaking me off there for a minute.
Is it no other changes, do I hear most of the except the agenda as amended?
I'll make a motion. I'll support.
Motion and support.
Oh, that's beat up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Definitely on here. Uh, support?
I'll support.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. Spicer, now announcements, public comment. I tried to slip you in. Apparently there isn't any. Let's move on to Spicer Engineering Report.
Well, good evening. Do you have a copy of my report? Um, be happy to answer any questions you may have, some highlights. Um, we will be, we're want to get that bid for the hydroback services for the, for the water services going. Um, I think we want to do that in February with a possible March or April award of the constructing contract for the hydroback services. We do have a hundred and seventy-four locations that were randomly selected and we'll be getting that finalized list to Don in, in Hart here shortly, and we will be sending out notices to everybody on that hundred and seventy-four, um, service list and so they can be notified beforehand. We would expect that to start, um, end of winter, very early spring. So, um, the water project is still going well. Um, we called in an additional missed digstaking because we weren't getting a lot of response on the cables that are out along Bell Avenue. Those have since been marked. Don's been working with the locators and everything. We're going to be out there early next week. I think Mitch is going to be out there early next week to help pin down the location of those cables so we can finalize the water main design along Bell Avenue. Soon as that's done, we'll be able to apply for the MDEQ permit and move forward with the, uh, application to USDA for grant funding, grant or low interest loan funding. Are there any other questions on my report? Very good. I handed you a packet and this has to do with storm sewer. Last few months, we have been going over various, uh, aspects of your public utilities. Went over water main a couple of months ago, sanitary sewer last month, and this month we are doing storm sewer. What you have is the executive summary from your storm sewer asset management plan that was completed as a part of the SAW grant program. In that, we had funds to clean and televise storm sewers, try to locate where the storm sewers are, identify who owns them. You have a lot of storm sewers in the community that are owned by others. There's county drains that are owned by the County Drain Commissioners Office. There are MDOT storm sewers along the MDOT right of ways that, that they own. And then there's also some private ones, for instance, the school has their own storm sewer system that is not owned by the village. But then there are quite a few that are owned by the village that are mainly roadside drainage and so forth. And what we found is that a lot of those are really in pretty poor condition. They're very, very old, they're non-functioning. Roadside drainage, I think should be no surprise to any of you that it's pretty, pretty poor in most of the village. So, um, what we recommended out of the storm sewer was really that we, you need to do more work in cleaning and televising and really locating where the sewers are. We ran out of money about twenty-five percent of the way in. We ran out of grant money to do the cleaning and televising because the pipes were all full of dirt and it was taking so much effort to get through them and televise the storm sewers. So, storm sewers need a lot of work. Here's the second part. There's no funding to fix storm sewers. You don't have a bill for storm sewers like you do a water bill or a sanitary sewer or for wastewater. So where does the money come from for storm water? It comes from either the general fund or you do it as a part of a road improvement project. Or you, uh, go through the County Drain Commissioners Office. They will set up a drainage district and all of the property owners within that drainage district pay for the improvements. That's how the drain law works in Michigan. We did have Brian Wenling here at a, at a meeting, oh, it was probably two years ago now. And he explained, uh, you know, the process of petitioning the County Drain Commissioners Office to do a project. If, if the community members are interested in doing a stormwater project, that would probably be the best avenue to do that. The downside to having the drain commissioner do it is that the village kind of loses control of the project. You turn the project over to the County Drain Commissioner and they have a board of determination. And once that board of determination determines that the project is needed, the project is going to move forward and you kind of lose control over, over it. So, there's pluses and minuses to that. Pluses, the mechanism is there to get the job done, to improve the drainage. The minuses, you kind of lose control over it. On the other hand, it's not your baby anymore. So, that's kind of a plus, plus or minus. One kind of unique thing that was part of your stormwater asset management plan was your level of service statement. Because there is no funding for stormwater and because funding is so hard to find, the village has adopt, has chosen to adopt a minimum level of service in which to operate the stormwater system. The village plans to address issues as they occur and continue to search for sources of stormwater funding. Future stormwater improvements will be looked at in conjunction with other asset improvements such as streets, wastewater, and water. The village plans to invest a minimal amount of money into the system while responding to customer complaints. And so that is really the village's mission statement for the storm sewer. You are in a position where there's no money to pay for improvements and we're really being reactionary. Somebody calls with a problem, Don and the crews go out and, and take a look at it and they do what needs to happen to, to fix it. We're not making active investments in improving drainage because there's no, no funds there to do it. So, it sounds very bleak. You guys are not alone. This is common around most communities your size in Michigan. There's just no funding mechanism for storm sewer. Usually if we do a major street improvement project, we look at the drainage and we include that as a part of the streets project. However, Act fifty-one monies that you get for doing streets are limited to only taking care of the drainage within that street area. So you can't really use a Act fifty-one streets money to do a great big storm sewer project. You can, you can do the drainage under the street and that's it. So, so the final sheet in this is, there's just a copy of the GIS. And it's color-coded by who owns the storm sewer. The yellow are the county drains, the purple are the village-owned, and the red are private. All the little dots that are on this map are the catch basins and manholes. And if you notice, there's, there's a lot of areas where we don't have the lines connecting those dots because we were not able to get into those pipes to inspect them. We know there's a pipe there, but we haven't inspected it, we haven't identified what is there. So, our recommendations for the village are to continue to do mapping and condition assessments, to continue to find out what is out there, what is functioning, what is not functioning. And, you know, and to try to set aside a little bit and think about storm sewer as we're doing other projects in the future. So we can piggyback some storm sewer projects with some water, some pavement, and some other projects we may be doing in the future. So, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Appreciate it, John. Thank you, Pat, for this.
Well, it's, it, it's not a fun subject to talk about, but it is something that, that needs to be talked about because, I mean, it's buried, you don't see it, and until you flood, you know, you, you don't think about it. So, just need to be aware of it, need to try to do some proactive things to improve it as we're doing some of these other projects and just keep moving forward. There's no other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Yep.
Hart, do you do the state?
Are you leaving?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy evening. Let's move on to council minutes approval for December seventh, twenty twenty-one. Are there any questions regarding those minutes? If not, do you hear a motion to accept the minutes of December seventh, twenty twenty-one?
I'll make a motion to accept December seventh, twenty twenty-one council minutes.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Carry. Moving on to commission and committee reports. Downtown Development Authority, the January seventh meeting. Anyone have any questions on those minutes? Apparently not. The planning commission for December sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Any question on those minutes? Again, apparently not. Can I get a, a motion to approve and file the DVA and planning commission minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Support?
I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Carry. Moving on to the payment of claims. Anyone have any questions on the claims that have been presented? If not, do I hear a motion to pay the bills?
I'll make a motion to pay the, approve the payment of claims in the amount of two hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-four cents.
One second.
Just a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. New business memorandum of understanding between the MDHHS and Village of St. Charles.
So this is a, a, a state program. The HHS is giving money to local, um, communities, uh, to pay for people who have, are below the federal poverty level to pay their water bills up to, I think, six hundred and fifty dollars. Um, so this is us, us agreeing to join the program and if there's anybody in the village who is in need that they would be able to pay for those funds. Rather common, um, DHHS is making a greater effort, I think during COVID, to do this and help out. They've, uh, reloaded the funding for this. So far, the city of Saginaw, Bridgeport, Freeland, Merrill, Spalding, and Buna Vista have done this. Bertrand is waiting to vote on their council, so is Thomas Township as well as Tessen and Hemlock and us. So, it's something that, again, state funding for people in need, uh, but we just have to agree to sign up and agree to join the program.
Do I see any downside to it?
No, they have to meet the criteria in order to receive it, so.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah.
There's no extra cost to us?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, where did, do they go to a different place to, um, apply for the money or do they come to the village?
It will go to the Saginaw County Community Action Committee.
Okay.
And Hurley Coleman III is currently running that, the executive director. I think his dad was around for many years in Saginaw.
Yeah. Well, I'm in, I'm in favor of it.
You need a motion for that?
Get some help. Run the vote, Kevin.
We need a motion for that, uh. Do I hear a motion for the memorandum of understanding?
I'll make a motion to accept the memorandum of understanding.
Support?
I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried.
Will this go in the newspaper or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, resolution twenty-two dash one, amend the water rates.
Well, before I got here, as we mentioned last month, John Kazer, uh, Municipal Analytics and John Olson from Spicer worked out our water and sewer rates for the next, you know, ten, fifteen years as we made zero changes for fourteen years and we are now seeing the repercussions of the inaction. It is not something we enjoy doing, but it's something we need to do to maintain our system. Uh, and just to maintain, we're, we're, you know, we want to go above and beyond as well and we'll, we'll address that every January, um, going forward. So, these will amend the, uh, water rates, uh, an increase of five dollars and forty-eight cents a month. So, not ideal, but it's happening everywhere. I've sent numerous articles, uh, last month, the day before, our meeting, the, the news picked up the story and all the locations of people actually doing it. So, if you need a refresher, I can resend, but this is something we need to address going forward. And that's why we're doing a lot of this drinking wa, water asset management plan. This is why we're going after the USDA, uh, rural development loan or grant, whatever we can get to upgrade some of our, our lines and our services and our sewers and.
Town's getting pretty old, we're going to have to do something to bring it up to.
Yeah, but that way by the time Don retires, he looks like a hero.
Jason will appreciate it.
He already is.
Or he'll be named for a prize.
Or that. Don says better Bart than him.
I think our rates are pretty reasonable anyway when you compare to other places.
Absolutely.
And every time we go through this, we will continue to call around and make sure that we're comparable and still under, um, to make sure that we are giving you best service for your buck, but at the same time, we're not gouging. You know, I sent out, I believe I sent out, you know, Chesbourn's rates and Hemlock's rates and Merrill's rates. Um, we're, we're, we're below competitive and I, I would like to stay there as long as we can.
Any further questions on these rates? We don't need a roll call on this, do we?
Probably should because it's money.
And we need a motion to, um, pass resolution number twenty-two dash one to amend water rates. I made that motion.
I'll support.
Support? Or take a roll call?
Lois Tiley?
Yes.
Diane Dennis?
Yes.
Christine Newman? Richard Horner?
Yes.
Michael Nesbit?
Yes.
Kathy Harris?
Yes.
And Sarah Tiley?
Yes.
But I, I just have a question from my own curiosity. Five eighths by three quarter, is that, um, also?
That's a typical hustle.
Yeah, yeah, it's that kind of figure it was, but.
Probably ninety-five percent of the ser, ninety-five percent of the services, that's what they are.
Well, good, okay, okay.
And I, I misspoke when I said five forty-eight a month. That is for water and sewer, should they both pass?
So it'd be five and a half dollars a month for both, if they both pass. Yes, but it would be a good book.
Fair enough.
I'll just have to fuck back on my liquor.
And your wife?
My liquor.
I thought you said.
Haven't had any of that in hundreds of years.
Let's move to resolution twenty-two dash two.
I'll, I'll make, you need a motion on that too, dude.
You really?
No, do you?
Why, yes, I would. I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept resolution dash twenty-two dash two to amend the sewer rates.
One second.
Support it? Thank you. Roll call?
Lois Tiley?
Yes.
Diane Dennis?
Yes.
Christine Newman? Richard Horner?
Yes.
Michael Nesbit?
Yes.
Kathy Harris?
Yes.
And Sarah Tiley?
Yes.
Motion's carried? Put me on the planning commission, meeting twenty twenty-one review.
And I just want to be clear that Chris is required to abstain because she's calling in and they didn't extend at the county level, the emergency. So although you can still hold public meetings via Zoom and online, you cannot vote. It's supposed to be in person currently. Other municipalities are looking at trying to encourage others as different variants are coming out to extend it, but at, at the time, it is not allowed.
I didn't know that.
I didn't know that. I didn't know that.
Okay.
Well, thank you for keeping things up, Snup.
Yeah, she, she's not trying to dodge the vote.
I, I got to say, that groceries are a problem, you know?
She really wants to have her knee surgery. Does not want COVID, so.
Uh, so the twenty twenty-one annual report, St. Charles Planning Commission, this is something that we should be doing. We haven't been doing, uh, just a synopsis of the year in review. And it will help with our redevelopment-ready communities, uh, online application that I'm trying to get the grant funds to pay for our planning commission rewrite, zoning rewrite. So I, I kind of just show you, we have, I have all these tasks that I'm required to do. Based, pending, so, essentials, best practice, active task, ready for review and general questions, pending baseline items, completed best practices, documents and resources, and then appendices. Uh, so I'm just trying to check these off and as we see, scroll all the way down, I have all these things I'm trying to kind of knock out so that we can go after these dollars. And I think if we get a couple more done, I will be able to have them pay for the planning commission.
Oh boy, that'd be nice.
Yes, I think it's, uh, between fifteen hundred and, you know, twenty-three hundred dollars a month that we're paying.
Yeah.
I'd like somebody else to pay that. So I've asked them to change their billing cycle so that, just, uh, letting you have this and, and we'll check this off every year going forward, but this is kind of the baseline and, um, one of the things I wanted to get done, uh, I'll work on a public participation plan, parking flexibility. I'd like to get to internal review processes. Uh, I've put together a fee schedule that we passed last year, so we should be good there. They want a recruitment process, they want a training program, so all these are all things I'm currently working on to get this in. But I think with these and a couple more, I can really go after those dollars, so.
Now, this is just for the planning commission?
Yep, well, it'll, it'll help with economic development as well and going after other grants.
Oh, okay.
Hopefully for the DVA and things like that, too.
Well, I'm really thankful that you are just Zooming after all these grades, sir. Thank you very much.
Be approved by anybody?
No, no, I just want you to have it and it's official and I, I, I sent it.
Good job. How many more pages do you have to write?
Um, a minimum of twenty is what I'd really like.
For three hundred dollars a month?
Uh, it'll be more, I think they, they'll cover everything.
Okay.
Yeah, so it'll be worth it. Yeah, it'll be worth it.
Okay. That's what I like, someone who looks after the money.
Any further questions regarding the review? If not, let's move on to the MMWA, the Michigan Waste Management or Authority.
So as, as you know, our MMWA, uh, contract expires at the end of this year. So there, as of Monday, the RFP was approved by the authority, um, to go after recycling trash and things, uh, what else? I'm trying to, um, in their.
Yard waste?
Yard waste. Yep. Uh, and they, they're not gonna, one size fits all, they're gonna piecemeal it. If you are the best rate at recycling, you have a shot. If you're the best at garbage, you have a shot. If you're best at, um, yard waste, you have a shot, or all three. It's really gonna be kind of a, a, a bid between Green for Life or GFL and waste, waste management is what it's looking like. Uh, so I will, I'm just letting you know, this kind of gave you a synopsis of what's going on and we will probably need to vote to approve this in probably April, May, or June. They weren't sure exactly, uh, just yet. I think they have April on here, but, um, if you have any questions or, you know, I think I sent out the, the contract or the RFP, I should say, for review. If you have anything, um, questions about that, we went through on Monday and then I will send out the contract when they come back in for, for you to look at, but just wanted to make you aware that we will be likely getting on new service. I'm not sure what. I think the, the competition's going to be stiff and it should lower the price and increase the quality, which I'm excited for. Um, so just keeping you aware of that. You know, there's only one township that doesn't receive the recycling and, you know, that's something we gotta be aware of and, you know. Don's sitting right here and we'll see what you guys want to do when we get to that time, but I think it's a great service. I think, I think we, for what we pay and the taxes, it's tremendous.
It is, but, uh, the person in charge now, you have any confidence yet of her?
Catherine Tesson, she does a wonderful job. She's pretty, uh, runs a tight ship, she's pretty strict, which I like. Um, but at the same time, you got Russ Taylor running the executive committee and Russ is just sharp.
Well, he'll be good.
Yep, he asks all the right questions at all the right times and that's, that's what I appreciate about him.
He's been there a long time, so, yeah.
He makes it look easy.
I would agree with Hart.
He does.
I would agree with Hart, but I think we have pretty good leadership on that right now. I believe like Hart said, we're gonna get a better deal, just the way they're big now.
Yeah, and it's, it's super.
So we don't have to do anything with this either?
No, I just wanted to make you aware because we will have to vote on this in a couple of months and it, it will be tight.
It looks like in April.
Yep, that's what it says. Uh, this, on Monday, they said it could be as early as May or June, but. Yeah, so. I will bring that forward and that they made sure to remind us that we have to vote for as a branch of the authority first before the community votes. So, I will, you know, whatever you guys think is right, I will bring to the authority.
The community is voting?
The authority will vote to approve and then, and then the council.
Okay.
I said council instead of community, or community instead of council.
It doesn't begin until January first of next year?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Any further questions? Budget discussion.
So we are, yeah, only, not jumping ahead too far. Well, it's time to start thinking and discussing budget wish list items or things that you'd like to see or, or issues that are a priority to you. I will probably, I'm not probably, I will hand out, uh, the draft form next month. I will probably, not probably, I will hand out a draft form next month. And we will set the budget roundtable for later in February before bringing it to a vote in March. So I have, I'll be meeting with Don tomorrow, I've met with Julie a little bit, kind of going through DPW and police. And as we, DDA discussed a few things as we saw in the minutes, kind of all over the place. So I know that, you know, we, uh, in the CIT, the Capital Improvement Plan, a new truck for DPW is on the list. We did purchase a new police vehicle, so that takes that out. We were waiting on the new dump truck that we ordered last year. Um, do you have any timeframe, still in March or April?
Could be built in March, could be here in April.
So we're throwing money at the old.
We didn't pay for that, did we pay for that yet?
No, no. No, but we're putting a lot of money in the old dump just to make sure we can use it now, right? Like it needs what, six hundred seventy dollars worth of brake parts right now, something you have to have.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
It's a drain and the whole.
It's gonna have to come up.
Want to stop you.
It'll have to stop at the purchase again this year, right? This is only budgeted two years ago, we didn't do it, so that just stuck there.
Well, we did it as a, the lease, so we could make a payment this year and, uh, April next year. So without having it to, to solidify the lease payment through the state bank. So that way, we're making payments on it, although we don't have it, but at the same time, we're, we're getting rid of some of the liability.
It's a lease and we're gonna pay for a year, are we not using it?
We're gonna have to pay for it regardless.
I, I was alone.
But, well, it's, yeah, it's, it's a loan, a five-year loan.
Yeah.
So we're, we're paying on the loan now to
Right.
Yeah, to low, lower the interest rates.
Okay.
In, in my understanding.
We have to purchase them then?
Correct.
And.
Okay, we got leases?
No, no, sorry.
And I, and I was thinking on the heavy trucks, all the twenty-threes are already sold now.
So Don was just saying that all the twenty twenty-three heavy trucks are sold.
So even if you wanted one now, you couldn't even buy one.
So if you wanted one now, you could not buy one.
Okay.
So.
Of, of the style that we're.
So DPW truck is on the CIT plan, there's, uh, there's money for parks, there's money for the facade grant, uh, for things downtown. I've, I met with Rich at the Arnold Chiropractic yesterday. He has a laundry list of things he'd like done for their suite, that, um, I might try to work out with part DVA funds or grant funds, facade grant funds with their own fund, with their own money. They might rent on another suite, a lot of things, moving parts, we're really worried about the style trend building and what's gonna go in there. Got a couple people looking at, uh, the buildings left as Tony's, so hopefully something happens soon with Land Bank and with purchasing and things of that nature. But is there anything, I mean, we have liabilities, outstanding liabilities we're paying down. We've made a, a better contribution to our old pub last year than we had in previous years, uh, which increased our funding rate from like eight percent to fourteen, which doesn't sound like a lot, but it keeps the state off your back. Uh, and I think we'll see a big jump in our pension liabilities, uh, as far as funding levels this year as well. We were at sixty-four percent when I got here, we were at fifty-nine, sixty percent. We're on that teetering level where I had to produce a packet of papers with state saying this is our plan, this is how we're gonna get out of, you know, how we're gonna get out of this red area. Uh, so I think, I expect a jump this year at least to sixty-five, sixty-six percent and kind of keep moving away from that red line. Uh, but is there anything else that you can think of? You know, we're using.
No, but if, if the interest rates start going up, that's gonna help that fund.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
So now our funds too, actually. You, you gotta get those, um, CDs off of the one, two percent low.
Yeah, isn't that a shame? Isn't that a shame, that little bit of interest?
If interest rates go up, that'll happen.
Yes, hopefully it does.
Uh, 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 I would like to see another, uh, part-time police officer. So that we're kind of covered instead of, uh, depend on Saginaw County. I, I really don't like the idea of not being covered.
Okay.
Really, that, that really scares me. When I call, I'd like to have someone come.
Especially during the summertime, when the kids are all out of school and the public is out.
Yeah, 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 when the little, when the little boogers are out getting into trouble.
And I think we can use the federal dollars we received for those. We, we did agree to, to, uh, offer one gentleman, uh, former MSP trooper, uh, eight years experience. He should be starting end of the month. I'll bring him in for everybody next month to meet and greet. Um, we haven't offered a second, we've gone through several interviews, I think three rounds, looking for another quality candidate that we really haven't found, but we're, we're gonna, we'll keep looking for that.
So the other one didn't work out then?
Don't know yet.
Oh, okay.
It would, it'd be giving a, a nice chance, a good opportunity, but, um, Chesneen is also competing in the same pool. And so, um, one, they, they tried to poach this gentleman and I, we weren't having it. And then they, they might have poached another, which is okay. But we definitely got the better of the candidates, which is important.
Well, we've got one anyway.
Yeah, we have one, but we'll keep working on that.
Yeah.
Something to think about and send me messages.
Well, I think if there's money later, I'll, I'll give each, each one of us a twenty-five thousand dollar grant.
That Commissioner and Chiwasi, Chiwasi coming, finally resigned today.
Saw what happened in Chiwasi County, right?
Yeah, they did.
He finally resigned today, but it was because
Yes, finally.
Because of a sexual harassment charge, so.
I mean, how much more trouble could this guy get in without resigning?
His girlfriend on the board found out, he was texting the girl that he had had problems with. He hired her when I was there to be our secretary and I knew nothing of this. But I did think it was a little suspicious, but I was like, well, he's, you know, based on, yeah, looking at him, I was like, he's not doing anything.
So he had more problems than just the twenty-five thousand?
Yeah, yeah, no.
Yeah.
Uh, good, good for old Rup.
Can I, I just need, I want to bring up just one little thing?
Yes.
In the, um, DEA report, it mentioned a ice skating rink in the regard, you know, that's not such a terrible idea.
Well, I like to hear that from you.
I, I kinda like it because it could be wet, just walk the middle of that gazebo and quit skating in and around it and just parking over in the, um, other park, you know, maybe have to walk a little ways, but not much we have to do.
Well, that's something I was thinking too. I've been, I've been pushed by a few people and, um.
Richland Township did one and they're opening this upcoming week with it, but last year they had phenomenal turnout with it.
So a lot of people.
We had them in the past and they really haven't worked out.
They always have issues with them, I won't lie.
Well, even if the gazebo could be used as where you put your skates on?
Yeah.
And I don't know how a fire would go inside because and then put the rink around it. I don't know, it just seems, I don't know.
Seems like it would be nice.
I just thought it sounded like a pretty good idea.
Yeah.
And, and a lot of people are just getting their rings out this week actually, due to the, the weather change and drop. I know Alaso just put theirs on.
Well, every ring we've ever put out, the kids will march through it before we.
It's romantic concept, but weather dependent.
I, I don't think they ever had
That's the one thing, yeah.
I don't think they ever had good luck at making ice without somebody messing it up in the past.
That's what I think the problem, I mean, I, I think it's a great idea, but I know in the past.
People have to stay off until it sets up. But there's.
And the park hasn't seemed to work very well.
Didn't the DNR used to put one down right on the river like actually
The more we were editing.
partition off an area on the ice? Didn't they used to do that?
I'm not seeing our dad.
Okay.
There was a couple, they had a hockey rink down by North.
And all that, right?
Yep, I've seen that.
That was done by just kind of citizens.
Okay.
We had a bonfire and everything on there.
Yeah, I think last year it was Sizik and Robishaw.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And you know, if it's used, that's great.
Yeah. And they were, they still, they had, I don't know, ten, fifteen kids every day.
They were playing hockey and everything on there.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there's kind of parking down there too, you know, they're taking on
They had a bonfire and everything.
Liability, you know, we don't have any liability, but they do it like.
Right.
Right.
I would like one that's something that's easy to set up, easy to maintain, easy to tear down if you do.
I think there's some portable ones, they're only, we'll have to go take a drive once we get up and run and see what they look like.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Are you saying we're putting up one this year?
I'm not, I'm not saying that.
I don't see.
Okay, I, it's hard to hear through the phone, you need to buy a response word, so.
Anything further on the budget description?
It's something just to think about and again, text me, call me, email me. Try to work it in and see where we're at.
Well, let's see what the cost is anyway.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's move on to the environmental reports, DPW report. This is the year ending, uh, for twenty twenty-one, I think our water usage is up just a little bit. We did pump fifty-eight million, five hundred eighty-seven thousand gallons last year. Sewer, I think, was down a little bit, minus seventy-three million gallons we pumped. It's the routine falling, falling of the streets. The park, it was nice in December to a point, we did get most of the leaves mulched and cleaned up pretty decent, so we had a bad for the spring and we got most of the brush by old birds.
It got required.
Uh, Don's giving his report.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chris.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
You have any plus questions, Chris, or comments?
I don't, it looks good to me. You're doing a good job, my road's been cleared.
We do the best we can, that's all we can do.
You did a great job on the road.
Except the, the loss of power to the school with station, was that a consumer thing or did it break down or?
That was during that high wind event.
Oh, wind, okay.
The big high winds we had.
It's not like a sign of things to come?
No, that was just, I, some, something happened during that big wind event, took the power off for half the day. Anything further? Let's move on to the police department report.
Julie's at training, um, but so the, the name of the person we offered the deployment to is Jared Gregg. He's a detective's trooper specialist, eight years with MSP before resigning, in good standing on October twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-two. He's a graduate of the one hundred and twenty-fourth Trooper Recruit School and finished twenty-fourth out of one hundred and fifteen recruits in his class. He has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and management from Saginaw Valley and he's projected to graduate with his master's in, in administration from CMU in early twenty twenty-two.
How long was he with the state police?
Eight years, he served five years with, at the Lapeer post and was selected the Lapeer Post Trooper of the Year in twenty sixteen for outstanding service and work in the community. And while at Lapeer, he's selected to become a field training officer and go on to train, uh, ten new troops, uh, during his career, which I think will be beneficial to, uh, Ethan and Julie. And twenty seven.
Okay, does he, does he have a reason for not waiting for a pension?
Uh, he went to Amazon where he's doing significantly better, hence the reason he wants to be part-time with us.
Amazon?
Yeah.
Okay, never mind.
Yeah, he worked, he works from home, um, and he's making probably three times as much as a trooper would make. Uh, his wife is
Okay.
His wife works for CMU on the police, uh, force and she is the first female, uh, selected to the Isabella County, um, I was gonna say task force, but what would it be? I don't wanna say bomb squad, but SWAT team.
SWAT team.
So.
So you just want part-time?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
So, yeah, he's in, in November first of twenty twenty, accepted, uh, a manager position at Amazon in Deana Vista, so. Uh, but he's at, he's transferred to the West Branch posts with, uh, Accident Reconstruction Unit and served there for almost two years before, uh, accepting a position with the Third District Special Investigation Division as a member of the Marijuana and Tobacco Investigation Team. Uh, he worked, he worked undercover investigating felony tax fraud, tobacco tax violations, and violations of the Medical Marijuana Facility Licensing Act. And so I will say this, I think he will be beneficial here even part-time, uh, for our young and inexperienced team.
Sounds like a good day.
Okay.
Uh, I think we have to push back one week, uh, due to, I can't remember, something going on.
Okay.
So that'll give a little, a little more coverage, but you don't have to worry about him, he knows what he's doing, type of deal. And, uh, Julie put him through a
His name was?
Jared?
Jared.
Jared Gregg. Put, put him through what I think was maybe a, uh, overly done process, um, in-house visits with family and friends and things of that nature for a part-time position, but, um.
Just hope he doesn't get bored out here.
I, I think, I think he just misses it.
Yeah.
And I mean, twenty hours a week, eight, you know, sixteen to twenty hours a week, I think he'll be all right.
He's probably never taken a barking dog complaint in his life.
Well, he's, he's good with, he's good with nights and weekends too, so I was, I was, how soon can you start?
Yeah.
Mr. Profoot is on the line. Scott, are you there?
I am.
Excellent.
I can only hear you and one other person in the meeting.
Nobody said anything.
Is it me?
We're a little quiet.
Yeah.
I can hear you too.
Are, is there any movement being done on a six thirty Chesneen Street? And what's it mean by an administrative hold?
Scott, chicken?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it is.
Four oh seven, where is four oh seven with Clinton, is it at the end?
No, it's, I think it's.
Oh wait, I was in the three hundred.
I think it's Clinton.
No, it's in the middle.
She would know it, Cliff Barkles' old house.
Cliff Barkles' old house?
But you can, you didn't see him, neither did I.
That's the same one, man.
Well, I believe it's been taken inside, I haven't seen it again this week.
I gathered on the address. I know this, that's familiar.
I recognize that.
I think it's called. Uh, and, uh, Scott, the mayor asked about six thirty Ches- Chesneen and what does administrative hold mean?
Uh, we're just waiting till we go forward with the, uh, with the ordinances.
Okay.
Waiting for what?
Ordnances.
Ordnances.
And the rewrite.
I remember.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So we can't do anything with it until the ordinances are rewritten?
We're trying to, basically, um, because
That's why we don't want them grandfathered in, right?
Correct, we become legal non-conforming.
Yeah.
So we rewrite and then we go out.
Okay.
Did he ever check on that one that I sent you on by gender peace?
Uh, no, every, everyone did.
Very well this year on permit.
Scott?
Scott?
Yeah?
You did very well this year on permit, nice income there.
Thank you.
Scott, uh, asked about the, uh, the truck that we, you can't seem to see, but you see the tracks of the Deweys, the toxic waste truck.
Actually, um, I was in town this weekend, Saturday morning at seven AM, I got photographs of the commercial vehicle, FM property, it's five oh seven West Water Street. And I saw it again Wednesday night on my way home from the brand. five oh seven West Water Street, and I saw it again Wednesday night on my way home from the branch board meeting. Uh, my pictures up there too, so today, uh, a notice violation went out to the owner.
Perfect, that is definitely not something we need in our village limits.
What property is that?
It's at Jenderzke's on the corner.
Oh, the curve, okay.
And he, Scott's been out four or five times and it either just missed it, so it wasn't, it was there, but didn't have, you know, proof that it was there or couldn't tell them, but we knew it was there with the cold evidence, so. Thank you, Scott.
It's the one, you know, that has the dot?
Yeah.
The one right, right up the front.
If there's no further questions regarding the building permit, uh, Building Inspector's
I am.
Report. Move on to the public comment.
I'm having a lot of trouble hearing, sorry.
Public comment? Mr. Hoff, you got anything?
Nope, I'm just here to support you.
Oh, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
There's someone in the community that's here to.
Can I hear a motion for adjournment?
Appreciate that.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn meeting.
Support?
I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Foes? Motion carried.